I call to order this meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, March 23, 2020. Clerk, has the roll been taken? Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which is stand one nation, liberty and justice for all. Am I so loud? Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. Clerk, has the roll been taken?
It has. All are present tonight.
We have, obviously, our four, five commissioners here, and then by phone Commissioner Lalone and Commissioner Gillis are joining us tonight, for those watching. Tonight, we do not have any proclamations or presentations, but I will ask the commission, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing no hands. Commissioner Gillis, any additions or deletions? Commissioner Gillis?
All set, thank you.
And Commissioner Lalone?
I'm good.
Seeing none. I did want to let the public know that if you want to submit public comment, you can email your comments at comment@mt-pleasant.org, and we will give you a few minutes to kind of get your comments in, and our city manager Nancy Ridley will read those as they come in. So I will now open the public input on agenda items.
Mayor, would you like me to read the one that I do have so far that's related to the agenda?
Yes.
We received one this afternoon from Glenn Erwin of 1018 Sweeney Street, Unit C, and I will read his comments. He indicated, "Once again, I would like to state my opposition to the proposed special assessment. Apparently, the stated rationale for the assessment is that Tifa does not have the money to pay for a project that was started in 2011 as a Tifa project. The reason Tifa does not have the money for the project is because it was defunded by the city. To say that the city must use triple taxation in downtown Mount Pleasant because of the lack of Tifa funds is actually quite astounding. The city is going to solve a problem it created by using triple taxation. Naturally, this reasoning will lead to a lack of confidence in the city leadership with the property owners. It is my understanding that Tifa currently has around $900,000 in its fund, 200,000 of which is unallocated. If my figures are not correct, I would ask for clarification from the city. If there is unallocated funding in Tifa, how can it be said that Tifa cannot complete the lighting project it started in 2011? I would ask for clarification from the city about the unallocated funds in Tifa. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to ask the city to start funding Tifa again. The city has maintained that it wants to revitalize the downtown. I assume that is why Tifa was created in the first place. The defunding of Tifa seems to indicate a radical shift in policy of the city. I would ask for clarification from the city in regard to the policy of the revitalization of downtown Mount Pleasant. At the last meeting, I made public comments about the values of commercial properties plunging in one year in the city of Mount Pleasant. Naturally, if this decline continues, the city will experience significant budget woes very soon. The city needs to vote down this proposed assessment tonight. The city needs to start adopting policies that will restore confidence and restore property values. Creating triple tax zones away... Creating triple tax zone drives away investors. Naturally, property values decline when that happens. Granting massive welfare packages to out-of-town investors and raising taxes on in-town investors results in a decline of confidence in the city. When confidence in a city declines, property values decline and revenues in the city decline. The city has a golden opportunity tonight to reverse a bad policy, restore Tifa, and begin to take the road to restoring confidence with property owners. Thank you for your time, Glenn Erwin."
Nancy? Sorry. Could you forward that email to me?
Yeah.
I'm trying to be as quiet as possible.
I'm sorry, I can forward it to the full commission. Did you want it right now, Commissioner Lalone?
Commissioner Lalone?
Yes, what?
Did you want that email from Nancy right now?
Yes, please.
Because it's set up as a special email account, apparently I don't have permission to send emails from it, Commissioner Lalone, so I'll have to get that fixed and get it to you either later tonight or in the morning. Sorry.
Okay.
We're just going to wait a couple of minutes to see if anyone else submits an email to the comment@mt-pleasant.org.
I've received nothing else.
Has nothing else come in?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Okay. We will move on, and there is one other public comment section at the end of our agenda, so if you're watching the meeting and you have a comment, you can still email at comment@mt-pleasant.org. Manager Ridley, would you like to read through our receipt of petitions and communications?
Yes, the only items you have in that section of the agenda tonight are the report on pending items, and I would comment that based on how we're reprioritizing things, it's likely that the draft work session schedule that was included in that communication may get revised over the next couple of weeks, but we can...I just wanted to give you that heads up. We will continue to evaluate that. You also have the February minutes of the Airport Advisory Board, and you have a correspondence that was received by Michael Mountsatson regarding another possible exemption from the solid waste bag tag system. And as you know, you spoke about that at your last work session and gave us some direction to work on some potential ordinance changes regarding that, and so we will be bringing something forward to you at one of the next couple of meetings in regard to that issue. The other correspondence that was in your packet was a communication from Ryan Litwiler regarding concerns he has with the overnight parking ordinance. And I guess I would indicate, just so the public knows, that starting last week, we have not been enforcing the overnight parking ordinance, and certainly in the state that we're in right now, we will not be enforcing that in the near future. So again, I think we have some time to look at Mr. Litwiler's concerns before we get back into enforcement potentially. And those are the only petitions and communications for you this evening.
Thank you, Manager Ridley. Next on our agenda are consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are items on the agenda with an asterisk next to them. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Not seeing anything. Commissioner Gillis, are you okay with the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you.
And Commissioner Lalone, are you okay with the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will go forward. Manager Ridley, can you read off the consent calendar items?
Yes, the items we have on the consent calendar tonight include the approval of the minutes of your regular meeting of March 9. We have one bid for your consideration this evening, and it's for the bid for new and replacement sidewalks in 2020. The new sidewalks are expected to be constructed on the west side of Henry from Broadway to Pickard, and the replacement sidewalks take place throughout many areas of the city. We're recommending approval of the low bid of Lake Shore Construction for $164,336, which will require a budget amendment of just over $20,000, which will allow us to address the complaint locations that we are currently aware of in the replacement section. The next item on the consent calendar is the city commission will recall, late last year, the commission approved for the mayor and clerk to sign a contract with Nottawa Township so that we could agree to process wastewater sent to our plant from Nottawa Township. When that agreement was reviewed by the U.S. Agricultural Rural Development, which is the entity providing a significant amount of funding for the Nottawa Township construction of their sewer system, that agency recommended a few minor adjustments to the agreement. Those recommended changes were reviewed by city staff, the Nottawa Township staff, and both attorneys from both jurisdictions, and came to agreement on that language, and then sent it back to the U.S. Rural Development to get final approval. And so what is in your packet tonight, U.S. Rural Development is now comfortable with, and is only slightly revised from what you approved last year to provide clarity in a few areas. So we're recommending you authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the revised agreement instead of the original agreement from last year. And then the other item related to the Nottawa Township sewer is that in order to connect the force main that Nottawa Township will be constructing from the township to the city plant, we're recommending that an easement be granted so that the main can be placed underground on some of the city-owned property where our DPW building is and where our wastewater treatment plant is. That easement is a fairly standard easement language and has been reviewed and recommended by the city attorney, so we're recommending you authorize the mayor and clerk to sign that easement as well. And the last item on the consent calendar is approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Tolles?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Lalone, do you have any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Gillis, any discussion?
All set.
Very well. All those in favor of...
Roll call.
Oh yeah, that's right. So we have a roll call vote, per the executive order from the governor. So Jeremy will call the roll call vote.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Aye. Oh.
Commissioner Lalone?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next on our agenda is item number six, which is to consider approval of Resolution Number Five to approve the role and set payment terms for Special Assessment District Number One, 2020, as postponed from March 9, 2020. And I will let Manager Ridley introduce this.
As you know, we've been talking about the installation of additional pedestrian lights on Michigan Street between Oak and Washington for a couple of meetings now. We've had numerous discussions regarding how to do it, and in summary, I believe this is where we are tonight. We have agreed upon the revised design, which keeps eight of the existing poles in place, reuses two of the existing poles in a different location on the street, and purchases six additional streetlights. The assessment role is based on a split of the cost with 50% to the property owners and 50% to the city at large. All of the public hearings have been held that are required under the ordinance. Due to the number of objections that have been received from property owners, five votes is needed to complete the final approval of any assessment role. The postponement at the last meeting was based on a desire to consider changing the interest rate to a different rate than 3% for those property owners who decide to spread the assessment over multiple years if the role is approved. The city attorney has indicated that the ordinance requires an interest rate shall be charged, so it is required that some amount of interest be charged for those who choose to spread the payments out. But since no bonds were issued for this project, you do have discretion in what that interest rate should be. All of our other pedestrian lighting projects have had an interest rate of 3%, and our alley assessments over the last couple of years have also had an assessment rate of 3%, so that's where the rate came from that was previously recommended. On the other hand, there have been other deviations on this project because of improving the pedestrian lighting that was installed in 2011, so changing the interest rate for this assessment could be considered as another deviation. Because it has come up so many times, we've also provided another motion in the agenda packet in the event that you decide against the assessment role but would still like to have the lighting improvements completed this year, because now would be the best time to do that while that street is reconstructed. So we have two motions in your packet for you to consider tonight. One is to approve Resolution Number Five, and we've left the interest rate blank in that. So if you were to do that motion, you would have to fill in that blank as part of your motion. Or the alternative motion would instead be to reject Resolution Number Five, which would stop the special assessment process and instead allocate an additional $17,400 from the Capital Improvement Fund to fund the remaining cost of the project so that it still could be accomplished this year. So it's the commission's decision as to which option you prefer this evening.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I move to deny Resolution Number Five and instead authorize a budget amendment of $17,400 from the Capital Improvement Fund and to fund the remaining cost of the streetlight improvement.
Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
Discussion? Commissioner Alsager?
I think in light of not only all the discussion along the way and the controversy along the way, just with businesses not being able to be open and some other hardships that are going on right now, I think this is a smart move for us to do. So I support the motion.
I'd like to echo what Mary says. I think if the financial hardships weren't going forward, I'm not sure I would support this. But given the financial hardships and the uncertainty for businesses along that corridor, I don't think we have an alternative.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think my calculation is the situation has changed. The special assessment has always been a tough issue this year with, I think, just the economic conditions with CMU losing students, especially now with, we're dealing with the repercussions of the COVID-19 pandemic. We have even less students and less bodies in Mount Pleasant, and with our local businesses suffering, it is hard to make that ask. A lot of people are dealing with a lot of uncertainty right now. We worked really hard, I think, as a team to reduce the cost of the project and to be fair with the property owners in the assessed district and the general taxpayer. I think we've come to this solution because of our circumstances, and obviously, it is a very special circumstance. Moving forward, I think this will probably impact how we look at our special assessments in the incoming future and how we evaluate those. So I will be supporting that motion, the motion on the floor. Commissioner Tolles?
Nancy, do we have a tentative start-up date for this?
We do. Let me see if I can quickly find it. Originally, the construction was scheduled to start on July 6. In light of where we are, we will need to be talking with our contractors about whether these dates that they bid on still work or not, but as of today, it would start approximately July 6.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lalone, do you have any comments?
No, just that I also support the motion.
And Commissioner Gillis, any comments?
Yes, I will be supporting this also. I think this was the right decision.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm stuck in habit.
It's hard to break old habits.
It sure is. We will commence with the roll call vote, and Jeremy will start us off.
Commissioner Alsager?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ronan?
Aye.
Commissioner Tolles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just so the commission knows, we will mail a communication to the property owners so that they know where you ended up on this discussion. So we will get that out in the near future.
Next on our agenda is a bid for the Michigan Street reconstruction. And Nancy, do you have any comments to add?
Just a couple. We received bids for both the reconstruction of Michigan Street and the related streetscape improvements, and then we had alternates in that bid regarding the pedestrian lighting and also an alternate for potentially providing irrigation for the trees that will be installed as part of that streetscape. And we're recommending the low bidder of McGurk Sand and Gravel for this bid. And based on the action you just took regarding the pedestrian lighting, we had given you four options in your commission packet, and since we've decided to move forward with the lighting based on that prior vote, we would be looking at either Option A, which is a ward of a bid for $496,121 with the appropriate budget amendments, and that includes both the pedestrian lighting improvements and providing irrigation for just the trees. The other option is Option B, which is for $490,831 in the appropriate budget amendments, and that would include the pedestrian lighting improvements but would not provide the irrigation for the trees. So I believe those are the two motions that you should consider, which one you would want to move forward with.
Commissioner Tolles?
I'd like to make a motion, A, to approve Option A, to add lighting and irrigation for the amount of $496,121, and...
Commissioner Ronan?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gillis?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Lalone?
I'm good.
Commissioner Tolles?
I'd like to make one quick comment on that. I think it's vital that we voted to add the irrigation there because I think I looked at the last cost for watering downtown was almost $18,000 for the year, so I think this makes a lot of sense to spend the extra $6,000. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, we will go into a roll call vote. Jeremy?
Commissioner Tolles?
Aye.
Commissioner Ronan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis?
Aye.
Commissioner Alsager?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next on our agenda is prioritize and approve submission of the city request for the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe 2% allocations. And those of you who have been here before know, we just go through and you read off your five choices. And I know we've got a couple submitted ahead of time, but I guess I'd confirm with staff, do you want us to read ours and then I guess you can read the ones that are submitted?
I think that would be good. That way, the public at home would hear all of the responses.
Okay.
Although we are hearing pretty well from Commissioner Gillis and Lalone, so if they wanted to read their own, they certainly could, I believe.
Yeah, let me ask. Commissioner Gillis, would you like to read your choices?
I'm fine with Jeremy reading those. I would appreciate if he included the amount and the priority it was, if critical or high.
Okay. And Commissioner Lalone?
Did you want me to read the five that I have?
I'm just asking if you want to. You don't have...
No.
Okay. So you're fine with Jeremy reading? You're, uh...
Yeah.
Okay. Jeremy, let... Sure.
We have, first, Commissioner Gillis has lime residual removal for $100,000, and that is labeled as critical. The island complex generator replacement for $125,000, which is labeled as high. The island complex generator replacement for one hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is labeled as high. The one million gallon drinking water reservoir rehabilitation for one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is labeled as high. The clarifier rehabilitation for eighty thousand dollars, labeled as high. The Mount Pleasant Police Evidence Room for thirty-five thousand, labeled as high.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Then, Commissioner Lalone sent Peak. The one million drinking water reservoir rehabilitation. The police evidence room. The drainage structure, three D scanning and condition assessment. And the island complex generator replacement.
I guess we can move, move down the line. Uh, Commissioner Tolles, would you like to start?
Yes. Uh, Peak, uh, which is ninety-five thousand seven thirty, uh, critical. Uh, number two, drinking water reservoir rehabilitation, one twenty-five, which is high priority. Number three, Mount Pleasant Police Evidence Room, thirty-five thousand, and rated high. Uh, number four, our port, uh, airport, excuse me, operational funding, sixty thousand dollars, which is critical. And, uh, number five, uh, clarifier rehabilitation for eighty thousand dollars, which is a high priority. Thank you.
Mary, would you like to read?
Sure. Um, mine were all on the critical list and there happened to be five of them. So that included Peak at ninety-five thousand seven thirty, River Trail Bridge at ten thousand dollars, thirteen oh three North Franklin at twenty-three thousand nine seventy-three. Airport Operations at sixty thousand and Lime Residual Removal at a hundred thousand.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Um, yes, I have, um, Peak, which is a critical priority. The one million gallon drinking water reservoir rehabilitation, which is a high priority. The Lime, Lime Residue Removal, which is a critical priority. The Island, Island Complex Generator Replacement, which is a high priority. And the Mount Pleasant Police Evidence Room, which is a high priority.
And Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, um, uh, Peak, which is, uh, they already mentioned the, the amounts, I won't, but, uh, certainly Peak, um, the Drinking Water Reservoir Rehabilitation, Airport Operating Fund, the Lime Residue, Residual Removal, and, uh, the Mount Pleasant Police Evidence Room.
Uh, mine in no particular order are Peak, the River Trail Pedestrian Bridge, the one million gallon drinking water reservoir, the Airport Operational Fund, Drainage Structure, Three D Scanning and Conditions Assessment.
I would just tell the commission that it's very possible that the March thirty-first deadline of when these are due might get changed. But we have all of our work done on our end. And now with what you've done tonight, we just have to do a memo to the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe summarizing your top five, which I'll get you a copy of that. So my expectation is that we will move forward with going ahead to submit these so that we have one item off of our list to do. So...
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is Item Number Nine, which is to consider an appointment by the mayor to this County Tax Allocation Board. No one jumped up to be appointed, so I was gonna appoint myself. I don't, does that, that requires a vote?
It does not require a vote. It's an ad hoc committee, so you can make the appointment.
Uh, next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. And I promised Manager Ridley that she could have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments to bring some of you up to speed, but also to make sure the public at home has some additional information about what is happening with our city services. Um, as we indicated in a press release that we sent out on Saturday, we will be evaluating which services we see as critical or essential on a weekly basis so that we have time to make adjustments as we work through this process. Um, I think it's pretty obvious that services such as fire, police, wastewater, and water fall into the critical service category. In addition, we believe the airport does, and we have certain FAA obligations in regarding to keeping the airport open as well. And we also believe trash collection falls into that category. As you know from a press release we did last week, we are not able to do curbside recycling pickup at this point because the, um, MRF is not open. So at this point in time, the recycling is not considered a critical, essential service, but the regular trash will continue as planned. We also plan to keep our parks open at this time, but we have closed the restroom facilities at each of the parks. But we will have park staff coming in to clear the trash out of the trash bins so that they not, do not get overflowed and deal with any major issues that may come up in the parks. And we also have staff that are monitoring the phone lines and the emails so that we can address any urgent city service that may arise to the best of our ability. There will be some administrative functions that will continue to occur in the background, but for the most part, the public would not, um, be aware of those. But I do want to assure the public that we are reviewing some of our local, um, fees and charges to identify which ones we might be able to recommend to the City Commission, that we could either change policies over, we could change the fees, or we could suspend the fees for some period of time. There are many things that we can't do as far as helping out an individual resident or an individual business, but we can look at overall policies that affect all businesses or all residents in the city. So we've initiated some of that research to determine what of our local fees and charges we might be able to bring to you for consideration at a future meeting. The most obvious one is the recycle, curbside recycling fee. We're not providing that service right now, so we're looking at what options we have about giving credits on the utility bill or not billing it for a month or something like that, that we will bring to you. And so as we do that research, we will be looking at what kind of action does it take on your part? Can you do it with a simple motion? Or do we need to do an emergency ordinance? Or what are our requirements in doing that? And we'll also give you an estimate of what we think the financial impact of those decisions might be. So I want to let the public know we are looking at that, and it is something that the commission will have in front of them sometime in the near future. To the commission, I would say to you that during this time period, there are likely some decisions that may need to be made quickly. And it may not be clear that I have the authority as the city manager to make those decisions. But I want to assure you that I will do my best to inform you of those where I think there's a question about my authority. And I will only make the ones that I believe are absolutely necessary or time-sensitive. But in those instances where I think maybe I might have gone further than the authority that I have, I will bring you documents after the fact, asking you to confirm that decision so that we are covered as a city for those. But I will try to keep those to a minimum and try to keep you informed of those as they might occur. But let me give you one such example this evening of something that has already come up today. Our utility bills are scheduled to be done this week and mailed out to our residents and our businesses. Our ordinance says that we shall ma- mail bills every month, and we shall assess a five percent penalty on those unpaid bills. Due to the status of our local economy, what I would like to do is go ahead and send the bills so that our residents and businesses know what they owe for their water bill at this point in time. But, um, I guess I should mention, first of all, we've already suspended water shut-offs. We are not shutting off water to businesses and residents because certainly we don't want that to be going on when we're encouraging people to wash their hands. And we felt we had the authority to be able to make that decision. But with these bills that we'll be mailing, um, we talked today about, normally they would be due April fifteenth. And what I would like to do is not make them due until May fifteenth so that those who need a longer period of time to pay the bills would have a little bit more time to do that. But those who can afford to and want to pay the bills would know what amount they owe and could go ahead and do that. And I would also like, when we send those bills out, not to assess the five percent penalty at this point in time, because it doesn't make sense to give them another thirty days but have the system automatically calculate a penalty. Under the ordinance, I think I have the authority to change the due date, but I know I do not have the authority to waive the penalty fee. So I thought, since I had the seven of you tonight, I would give you a heads up that that's what we're looking to do this week as we do the bills so that if you have concerns with that approach, you can tell me. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to write up anything for you to take specific action on it. So if you seem supportive of not doing the five percent penalty, we'll move forward with that administratively. And then at a future meeting, I'll follow up with the paperwork to show that you're confirming that action after the fact. So that's an example that if you had some feedback for me tonight, I would be interested in it. But my guess would be, as we go through these next three weeks, there will be other instances like that that will come up that we'll need to make a fairly quick decision on. So I'm hoping that you will have trust in myself and the staff to make those decisions. And I assure you, we will keep you informed along the process and take into consideration any thoughts or considerations you have before we pull the trigger on those, assuming we have enough time. So this is certainly unprecedented times we're in. Um, so I guess while I have the floor, 'cause I think this is my last chance tonight, I wanted to publicly thank our residents for their, um, flexibility and patience during these time periods and that continued flexibility and patience, and encourage them to adhere to the governor's executive order and to look out for their neighbors and try to take care of each other during this time. I would also like to thank our staff for what they've been trying to do over this last week as we try to respond to this unexpected, um, crisis that we seem to be dealing with. And we appreciate the, their flexibility and their loyalty to providing ongoing public service. We have a number of critical staff who will be working over these next three weeks. So in advance, I want to thank them for their commitment to the services that our community needs on a daily basis. I also want to thank, um, those who are on the front line, our healthcare workers and our first responders. They're under certainly a lot of stress this evening, and we certainly value what they're doing. And then thank you commissioners for your leadership during this time and the support that you have shown, and I expect we will continue to see as we all lead our community through these unprecedented times. So we certainly don't know what the future brings for us, either in the short term or the long term. But I do know that we, as a community, can get through this and we can take care of each other during this time period. So I continue to have hope, even in these difficult times that we have. So thank you for that opportunity.
Of course. Thank you. Um, I would, I would echo those same comments, uh, as from Manager Ridley that, uh, I'd like to thank, thank our community for, uh, being very resilient. The next, uh, few weeks to months are gonna be tough. And some of us have already experienced some tough conditions, whether it be at our job, with your kids at school, um, and, uh, just a lack of familiarity with your daily routines. It, it, it can be very tough and it's affecting everybody. A lot of people are losing their jobs, and when the bills come, uh, it doesn't help, uh, with those stress levels, especially when we're in just on certain times. And so I think, I just wanna thank, thank our staff for being flexible and looking out, uh, to do as much as we can. I'd like to thank our leaders of the state for, uh, really trying to be ahead of the game and address this situation as it evolves, um, almost daily. You know, a few weeks ago, we were at zero cases, and we were at two. And today, we're over thirteen hundred. And so it's, it's really a situation that, uh, people are adapting to every day, and, and I, I can't thank people enough. On that same note, I'd like to encourage people as well to, uh, be cognizant of your actions, to practice social distancing, um, to not, to not overrun, underestimate the risks that, that really our healthcare system and our society faces right now. I think, I think we are in, um, uh, a s- very serious situation. And, uh, every little bit of effort that anybody can do is really gonna make, hopefully, a big difference in the next weeks to months. And then I'd like to thank some of our community members for the generosity. Um, as many of you know, I'm a, I'm a board member for ICRH. And ICRH has taken some, uh, a lot of accelerated action to get a lot of people housing much quicker than, uh, we had originally planned and our residents had originally expected. And, uh, we have received a lot of contributions from the community to help with that effort. But there's still some people who are looking for housing, and it's a situation that is also evolving. And, um, just, uh, it impresses me upon the, the generosity that our community has for those who are in tough situations when, even when we're all, uh, in a tough situation.
Commissioner Tolles?
I'd like to also, uh, give a thanks to our city staff, police department, fire, first responders. I know we're in a very, very difficult time, you know? We haven't faced anything like this before, but I'm pretty sure we'll persevere and, and get over this.
Commissioner Alsager?
Um, I'd like to directly address Manager Ridley and say I think that I have great confidence in you making good decisions. You know, if you're gonna extend a bill, it makes sense not to extend a, a penalty payment with it. So I have great faith in your decision-making.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lalone, did you have any announcements or any thoughts on the, uh, water bill?
I just wanted to echo what has already been said. Everybody stay safe and be kind.
Commissioner Gillis, any comments or announcements?
Just wanted to thank the staff, myself, and how you pulled together to have this meeting this evening. Um, my fellow commissioners for their, um, participation in this forum, um, like this. And of course, our police officers and the people who are on the front line in our hospitals and, uh, medical facilities. Let's all work together and stay healthy.
Seeing no other announcements, and, um, I will open up the last public comment section of the evening on any city-related business. And...
So far, Mayor, I have two comments that have come in from the public that I can read, um, while others might be sending theirs in. The first one came in, um, very early this morning. I think it was at one oh two AM is what time it was. So this was certainly before the governor's announcement this morning. But the communication is from Scott Kraus. is from Scott Kraus. He did not provide an address, but his communication was, "Will you please issue a stay-at-home order to protect the essential employees and healthcare providers of Mount Pleasant? There are numerous cases of residents not following the CDC recommendations by staying at home with exception to purchase essential items." Thank you. The second communication came in this evening, and it is from former Commissioner Tony Kulik, who also did not give us his address, but we'll still read his as well. And Mr. Kulik's comments say, "Since the Isabella County Resource Recovery Center will be shut down to the foreseeable future, and there will be no curbside recycling, has the city considered any sort of refund or collection holiday from the recycling fee?" And then secondly, I'm sorry, this probably should have been read during the first public comment period. I didn't realize it was here because his title is "MRF Shutdown." But his second sentence says, "If the city is going to go to a zero interest for the Michigan Street Lighting Special Assessment, shouldn't the city go back and refund interest paid on other special assessments levied over the past years? Based on your action, I'm not sure that..." I'm glad I, or it's not as problematic that I didn't read that earlier, so I apologize I didn't notice that. And those are the only two comments I have thus far, Mayor.
Okay. We will wait a minute, see if we get any more comments, and then I will move to adjourn the meeting after that.
While we're waiting for those comments to come in, I would encourage both the commissioners and any of the public that, at home that is watching, to provide feedback to us on how this meeting went in this revised format because we have another city commission meeting scheduled for April thirteenth that will have to decide if we want to continue in this format, or because we have more time, if there's a different way, we might be able to conduct that meeting. So any and all feedback on how this meeting was structured would be very much appreciated by either the commissioners or the public watching at home, please.
I believe a minute has passed, and have we received any more comments?
No more have come in, sir.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Gillis?
Could we please speak to the fact the census is still rolling out and anyone can still go online, and that is still a process that's happening?
Yes. Did, does staff any more, any comments about the census before we adjourn?
Sorry to put you on the spot, Jeremy.
No problem. At this point, yes, the census is still continuing, so we encourage the public to continue to fill out that census. I think the last I looked, we were over sixteen, seventeen percent had already returned for the city, and the, the state is about that same number. So it's very simple, takes five minutes pretty much, based on what most people are saying. Everybody should have received probably by this time their first postcard, and they'll continue to get more notices as time goes on if they haven't filled that out yet. So go ahead. The Census Bureau is still continuing. They have extended the self-response deadline a little bit farther as of last week. They probably will adjust things, like everybody's adjusting things moving forward. So at this point, you can still respond even into mid-August, but obviously, we're asking that everybody who can fill that out ahead of time. College students, if they're home, we're asking them to fill that out as if they were living here, because they do live here the majority of the year. So even if a college student is living at home, we would ask them, and it's appropriate, according to the Census Bureau, for them to fill that out as they are living here in Mount Pleasant. The dorms will be counted with group quarter enumeration, which you've heard me talk about before from the podium, so that piece of it will be automatically counted. But all of those students, if they have left Mount Pleasant, it's very important for them to make sure they're filling that out as if they are living here. But it's still proceeding, and we'll get more information from the federal government as things change on a daily basis right now, it seems.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
With no objection, I will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-four. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Night.